There you go.
Why is that one like a dance, you know? I've seen it do it before, but I can't remember how to fix it. All right. We're good to go? Think we're good to go?
Okay. I call the September meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission order. I'm sorry for the delay, but we need to let the public watch it on video if they so choose. Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Heidemann.
Here.
Flugner.
Here.
Mr. Stromberg.
Here.
Mr. Daniel Livich.
Here.
Jay Holmes is here and Chairman Hankins.
Here. We've got a quorum. Everybody received minutes to the last meeting. I'm going to note one change. There's a typo in the approval of Agenda Item Number Eight. Other than that, are there any corrections or additions? Now they'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Jay, do you have the decisions from the last meeting?
I do. Approved items from the August 23rd, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item One, text amendment for churches as a special use in a light industrial and general industrial districts. And special use permit for church at 11189 Forest Hills Road. Item Two, special use permit for outdoor storage at 1152 Turret Road. Item Three, text amendment for medical and dental clinics and outpatient medical facilities as a special use in the general industrial district. And special use permit for a therapy and wellness office at 9950 North Alpine Road. And finally, text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission section of the zoning code.
Thank you. We've got ten items on the agenda tonight. First one being ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-one variance in front yard fence height for property known as six oh four Marquette Road. Carrie, would you give us the staff report on that, please?
Yes, this property owner, six oh four Marquette, had a six-foot fence installed in her front yard, basically around the driveway in her front yard, right up to the front property line. She did not get a permit before building this fence. We believe she knew that she needed a permit and she knew that a six-foot fence would not be allowed in the front yard area. The maximum fence height that our code allows for front yard fence is four feet. However, she did continue to have the fence built. After receiving the violation notice, she applied for this variance in order to keep the fence as it is. Staff is recommending denial of the fence height variance. There's nothing unusual about the property which warrants a fence this tall in the front yard. It's actually a small yard and a tight space and this fence could pose a visibility hazard for cars that are backing out on the Marquette from those driveways near the fence. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. The applicant is Debbie Kennedy. Is the applicant present? Would you approach and be sworn in, please?
Could you please raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Debbie Kennedy, six oh four Marquette Road, in Metzeney Park, Illinois.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Okay, what I did is I took a foot, I took an existing fence down and replaced it. Some of it was tall already. It was broken and decrepit, it'd been there thirty years. I did raise some of it up higher. I have a neighbor next door that I can't go outside without being attacked verbally by her continuously. I never did, I didn't feel like calling the law. I just, but her words to me are very vulgar every time. My name is Debbie, she's never called it. I run a business there, my name's on my truck, it's on the sign and stuff. So what I would like to say that, yeah, I got the violation and I did apply for the variance hoping that you would give me some leniency. I do not have the fence cleared to the street because years ago, oh my gosh, probably ten years ago, I had already moved my front fence that was there up and made parking out front because I had an in-home salon. Then you guys installed the curving, so that took that away. And then in the spring, I put a track in there so cars could park, at least one or two small cars could park in the front if need be. My fence does end when you look where most trees end if you look down the street. I'm not doing any more visibility hiding other than for her to see me come in and out of my house. I just called the law last Tuesday. I went out at five-thirty in the morning because I had the law at my house four times on Monday due to her. I cleaned up a pile of rubbish. It was building materials, but people were taking it. I thought I had permission to leave it there. She called the law, I talked to, I forget his name, your gentleman here. He did not give me a date to pick it up, but I, he gave me till Friday, but I cleaned it up that day. With that being said, there was a little bit left that my girlfriend wanted these patio blocks. So the next morning, I got up to smooth them out, I was going to take a picture and come up here because I got a parking ticket on the day before and see if somebody could help me with the parking ticket. And show the gentleman I had cleaned up the mess, like I said, before Friday. The policeman that came ended up taking me to Swedish American and trying to put me on the fourth floor because I got mad because she'd come out at five-thirty in the morning with a flashlight to watch. I was the crazy one. So this is what I'm trying to say. I had to go outside the top part of the fence, which is not to the street, to clean the rest of the mess up and make it look presentable to give you guys a picture. Otherwise, I don't even go outside my street. I am wearing a gun harness. I walk around my yard with a gun so they will not touch me, talk to me, or even look at me. I'm tired of it. I'm sixty years old. I don't know if they're bored or what. I'm usually just cutting their weeds. I can show you pictures of the side of their house between our houses and the fence. There's fifteen or sixteen months' worth of weeds there, it has not been cleaned. I've asked them, the village, whoever, I don't know why I can't think of his name. Could you tell me his name, dear?
His name is Zach Andrews, our code enforcement inspector.
I have talked to Zach last year, the year before, and we're here again this year. You know, when he was yelling at me for that pile in front of my house, which I talked to him on the phone and told him that I will be removing it, I'm remodeling my house. People are in there picking in the good garbage, it's good material. So, you know, I said, you haven't even made them clean that up. It's now we're what, it's sixteen months, Zach, but you're out here arguing because I'm ten days in with a pile of garbage that has rotated and been picked through and people took it. So I'm just saying, I've lived in my house thirty years. This gentleman has numerous tenants that he, I have trouble with all of them. He doesn't control his tenants.
I can feel your frustration, but can you keep the discussion on the topic of the fence?
Well, that's what I'm saying. So when the, when the fence is short and if I go out, it's like if she can see me, I mean, she's a phew right on me. So now I can actually kind of get out and move around, she don't quite catch me, so she don't see me at all. Because I really try to run to the far side and, you know, move around a little in my yard. I will pretty much have my backyard cleaned up shortly and I will be hanging out there. But I'm just saying, I'm putting it there so I can have some privacy and be able to hang out in my yard. I mean, her approach to me is...
All right, that's enough.
Well, I'm just letting you know, that's what I get.
We don't need to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's what I'm saying. That's what I hear when I, when she approaches me.
Did you have anything more?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kennedy? Commissioners may have some questions. I have one. Were you, were you warned by the village that you needed a permit to construct a fence? And that a six-foot fence was not allowed?
I thought because I had an existing fence?
Were you warned?
No.
Did you not understand that you needed a permit to construct a fence?
As I was going to say, I thought because I was tearing down an old one, I could just replace it with a new one. Because I had one there prior.
Any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Was the fence prior to the same height, was it six feet?
Some of it was. It just was getting old and even in the, on April storm, it had fell over. And I went out to try to pick, I had a chain link and then I had wire-tight privacy fence, so I didn't have to look at the weeds anymore. But, and then it fell over. She even seen me trying to put it up. I've had brain, two brain surgeries, one in nineteen and one in two thousand and twenty. Supposed to be on a ten-pound limit. But I'm out there trying to put both of these fences back up, she sees me outside and later brings it up, oh, I seen you doing that. And when I approached them with, I'm going to ask somebody to come and help me tie it together. I don't like that gate, just so you know, I don't want that gate, I feel like I'm in prison. That's got to go. And I have said that to Zach since we've talked about the pile of, because there was more rubbish there. I took that off too. That was the stuff I cleaned out so I could put the fence up. That's how much junk was growing into my tree, into, between my two fences, the chain link and the wood one that was there prior. And it was actually out farther. I cut it back to match the one that I already put back years ago, like ten years ago.
Good answer to your question.
So there were parts of the fence that you had previous that were six feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Behind the front of her home.
Behind the front.
Behind the front of the home, not in front of the front of the home.
Well, there's pictures and some are, I can't find a picture yet. I mean, you don't see it now because my porch is closed.
Any other questions of the commissioners?
I'd just like to clarify that that chain link fence that I see on, in that picture, on this side of the wooden fence is also your fence.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And it's been there. I put it up, I bought the house in October of ninety-one and those were all put up in nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, and that to me looks like a four-foot fence.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
But that was what was over there. But to get privacy on the other side, I owned a building on North Second and then my brother owned a bar, so when he left, I went and grabbed a bunch of his six-foot pieces and I attached them by wire tie, because I didn't want to dig holes to the fence on the other side. And that's how I had it attached. The same way, if you go down on North Second where my building was, I got fence from somebody else and did that whole wall that way with wire ties. Okay, because you couldn't dig holes, they had the drain. So I just parsed it up there and wire tied them to get my privacy on my property. So I did the same thing there. Where you see the big fence.
Right.
Okay. But yes, there was a chain link on the other side, but I had, I had wood fence tied to it also.
And just to clarify, oh, sorry.
Any other questions of the applicant?
So you have six-foot fence around the whole back of your yard? Okay.
I put that in the spring of ninety-two, when I moved in. I have the permit here with me.
And the six-foot is permissible in the backyard?
Yes.
As long as it doesn't go in front of the front of the home, it can go on the sides and behind with six feet.
Did you ever consider a natural barrier for privacy in regards to some type of foliage?
As in trees?
Yeah.
Well, even when the witness, the chain link was lower, because no matter who lives there, they never clean the yard or trim the trees. I've tried to grow things and either their children pee on it. It was, it's just, it wasn't, it's not worth fighting over. So that's why I believe in my mind, I think he's been there maybe twenty years. I don't know, I didn't even learn his name until six weeks ago. That's, that's what I'm saying. I don't say nothing to, I...
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
And I've been a widow for like twelve, so I'm just telling you, I've maintained this.
Two other citizens are signed up to speak on this. Is that Ivy Larrig?
Could you also raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Ivy Lessig, six oh eight Marquette Road in Metzeney Park.
Hi, how do you spell your last name?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have the floor, ma'am.
I want to first say that the fence was not always six-foot, she just put that up. It's always been the four-foot. We have had nothing but problems with her the last ten years that I've been there. I've been harassed by her. I have police statements, police reports. She's been arrested three times in the last two months for the harassment she's done to us.
You're...
I don't agree with the fence being this high.
We're, we're here to talk about the fence.
Right, I understand, I'm sorry. It is about the fence, but last summer, she was poisoning our trees. She was caught on tape. If the fence is allowed to be six-foot, she's going to continue to poison our trees because we can't see that. We do have security camera all the way around our house because of her. And if that fence stays six-foot, we will not be able to see her poisoning our trees.
Thank you. And Mark Stargill?
Mark, can you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Stargill, six oh eight Marquette Road.
Hey.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. I have owned the property for twenty years. And for twenty years, I've had nothing but problems with this neighbor. She assaults my yard regularly. Right now, there's even a tree laying on my power lines that she cut in the backyard. She poisons my trees, she cuts them, she goes into my yard, cuts them down twice. So they're not the prettiest trees, but that's because of her. I've had flowers on that side, plants, ferns, hostas. They've all been killed from the garbage and the poisons that come from her property. We have privacy, we have security cameras around the house now because of her, because the property damage over the past twenty years has gotten so high. But with this fence, like Ivy said, we can't see her poisoning our trees. And we have animals in the backyard and animals in the front yard. And she knows this. After she took down the chain link fence, she left a gap in our yard and then let her dog in a couple times. We have no trespassing signs. The rubbish that she was talking about cleaning up was the rubbish that she put there. It wasn't our rubbish, she put it there in front of our property. It was part of the police report when she damaged the property there. That bush she cut out of our yard. So I don't agree with this fence. It's just a way for her to hide while she continues to damage my property.
Thank you. That's it for those that are signed up to speak. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak on this item? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public discussion. And I, is there any, I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second. Discussion. Hearing none. Has everyone read and understand and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any additions to the findings of fact?
No.
Nope.
Hearing none. Call for a vote.
Jay Holmes is in. Heidemann?
No.
Flugner?
No.
Klinger?
No.
Stromberg?
No.
Daniel Livich?
No.
Chairman Hankins?
No. This is going to go forward to the Planning and Economic Development Committee with our recommendation for denial on...
October fourth at five-thirty.
Next item on the agenda is a variance in rear yard setback for principal structure for property known as one twenty-six Winona Drive. Carrie, would you give us some background from staff?
Yep, this property sustained some fire damage to the back of the home. Earlier this year, the damaged portion was mostly an attached garage area and the damaged portion has since been demolished. The property owner would like to rebuild this damaged part of the home in the same location. However, that location is only five feet inside of the rear property line. The minimum rear yard setback in single-family zoning should be thirty feet. Staff is recommending approval, however, of this setback variance because the house was, for whatever reason, sited so far back on the lot, back when it was built in nineteen sixty. We'd really prefer that there be a garage in the back of the property than in the, in front of the home, utilizing that driveway to get back there. Is a lot more desirable location for a garage. And we find that there are unusual circumstances here. The damaged portion being rebuilt would not be a detriment to the surroundings. It's been that way for a long time, has not been a detriment to the surroundings. We recommend approval with one condition. Only the original portion of the principal structure, only one story tall, will be rebuilt in this five-foot rear setback area. The variance would not apply to any future additions or new structures. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. The applicant is Sally Peterson.
Representative.
Raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please.
John Penny, forty-six ninety-two Chandon Woods Drive in Cherry Valley. And then I'm power of attorney for my grandma, who is Sally Peterson.
Okay.
So pretty much Carrie covered it all. There was a house fire, my grandma's eighty-two years old, she still lives on her own. And the fire was in the garage is where it started from a lawnmower, kind of swept through the house. So me and my dad and a couple buddies, we had cleaned everything out. We actually, the structure was pretty bad, badly burned, so we've taken that down. And once I got to the permit phase, I found out that the variance is going to come into play. And I am only looking to rebuild on the same footprint that's there now, so nothing will be altered or above the one, the one story that you guys are discussing. In addition to that, everything else that I'm going to bring up to go, new electrical and the plumbing, new bathrooms. So while my grandma's out of there, I'm going to, it's going to be a new house once we're done with it. And all those permits have already been pulled as well.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Dan?
All right, when I'm looking at the picture up there, the garage, is that the garage as it currently is now?
Yeah, so where the arrow is from the mouse.
You could go up there and point to it.
Yeah, it's that whole span that goes from, this is concrete, so it's from here to here is the entire garage.
So it's a double-deep garage, single, single garage or two?
Single car garage, double-deep.
Double-deep?
Any other questions, applicant?
No.
I don't know if it's for him or for Carrie. How far to the other property on Greenview?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole other house back there.
I didn't measure that, maybe James can measure that real quick, approximate location, approximate distance.
So that's my cousin's house right behind my grandma. Are you talking about the lot line to his garage?
The distance, yeah.
It's about twenty feet. And then if you go to the neighbor to the right, I'm behind, I mean, you're literally ten feet away from the property line as well. There's several houses in that neighborhood and I'm not going to make a guess. I think a lot of people were in the addition mode back then and they built when they could, added on when they could.
How's the house, it's about twenty-five feet on the...
I'm just curious.
Anyone else? Thank you.
The last request I have is I know that nothing can happen today, but if you guys would be kind enough to approve this recommendation, I would ask if there's any possible way to look at expediting approval through city council. I got held up with the insurance company, they had to do their due diligence to make sure there wasn't arson involved or anything like that. And then they had to investigate the lawnmower company. So things got really delayed. And now, I mean, my grandma's at a nice, so they don't get me wrong, she's at TLC. But I'm kind of getting up to the winter months. And so if you guys would be able to make a recommendation to city council to consider expediting approval, I'd really greatly appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
I just have one more question. Are you building it or do you have a contractor?
No, it's all contractors. So...
And I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but recommend that that wall be drywalled, double drywall, just because of the closeness to the other house. That's why we have thirty yards, thirty-foot setbacks, so.
Just to answer that.
If that's possible, we can add to...
I am doing a fire barrier on both sides because where the garage connects to the house, it's actually the master bedroom and another bedroom.
And that's required?
Yeah, so there will be a fire barrier, but I, I can double drywall it too, that's not a problem, the whole thing. But it will be finished off, it's not going to be...
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right. There are other people signed up to speak. Dan Wackenski? Sir?
Come on up.
Sir, you're just supporting this?
Yes, I'm in support of it, yes.
State your name and address for the record.
On one thirty-seven Winona Drive. One three-seven Winona Drive. Or across the street, that's right.
Okay.
It's been that way for...
So you're going to go farther, I'm going to swear again, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, it's, I've been there and knowing the people that were there prior to that. And the thing was done about thirty years ago. He tried to make it easy on his wife so she wouldn't have to back off that driveway all the way back onto the road, just so she pulls into the, parallel to the road. And then she's able to just turn and pull all the way through, with the front of the car to the road that she's going to go on. It was a pretty good thing for her, that made it, made it easy for her to get out of the, out of the apartment. I have no objection to the structure being rebuilt the way it was. Didn't seem to bother anybody else, any else there that I know of. And I've lived there for what, forty, forty-four years now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And, is it Danny? Is it Swish? Penaflesh? Eighty fifty-one Old River? All right. Is there anyone else who wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public input. And entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion among the commissioners.
It was there for how long? I don't think it's gonna be a big problem.
Straightforward.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Jay said we don't need the double drywall, right?
So, we gotta add that in.
I, well, I think that's just, he said he was gonna do it, so.
Condition to put off various?
Right. He said he's gonna do it. We trust him. Right.
It's a building code thing, isn't it?
Yeah. With the short setbacks, yeah.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Everyone understand and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any additions to the findings of fact?
Yep.
Hearing none. Jay, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Fluger?
Yes.
Klinger?
Yes.
Stromberg?
Yes.
Daniel Levich?
Yes.
Jay Holmes is a yes. Commissioner Hinkins?
Yes. So, this will go forward to the Planning and Economic Development with our recommendation for approval. Next Monday at 5:30.
Thank you.
Next three items are related. We can hear about them. We can discuss them together. We'll have to vote on them separately. The first is a variance from freestanding sign base height and area regulations for property known as 9901 Orlando Avenue. The, uh, a variance in total sign area for the same property and a variance from commercial design awning standards for the same property. Gary, would you give us a staff background, please?
Yeah. I'd actually rather you guys discuss each of them separately, because there are, they are kind of different.
Okay.
And we're, and we have different staff recommendations for them also. First is the variance from our freestanding sign regulations. Freddie's Frozen Custard and Steak Burgers is proposing a pole sign that is 30 feet tall, which is three times taller than our code allows. And our code also requires all poles to be enclosed with a masonry base. This pole would not be enclosed. Our code also has a maximum area allowed for freestanding sign of only, only 100 square feet. This sign would have three different portions to it, which would add up to 133.8 square feet. We understand that being set back off of 173, this new restaurant is concerned about whether they'll be visible enough. But they will be included on multi-tenant signs right on Alpine Road and right on 173. And they're clearly, clearly visible to anyone visiting the Chesney Crossing Shopping Center or, or Lowe's, the Lowe's store. Staff feels this request for this tall pole sign is unnecessary and uncharacteristic of the area, and we are recommending denial of this variance from the freestanding sign regulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. The applicant present?
Who's the representative in the company?
Well? Can you raise your right hand?
Two left, our phone up there.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't we take custody of that? Or give it to James. Yeah, good idea. They'll be back, no doubt. All right. Sorry. Raise your right hand. Psalmist Word of Tell the Truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self you got.
Good idea.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Corey Huck, 10539 Fleetwood Street in Huntley, Illinois.
Thank you.
So, I'm just here representing them with any questions, you know, and representing the client as well with what they are proposing. My company has worked with tri-city signs on about three or four locations now within the Chicago, Chicago land location area for Freddie's. So, I'm familiar with the projects and what goes on, what they are requesting. So, as far as the pole sign, I know that's the main thing here. Yeah, the pole sign, like I said, that's, they're looking for that height due to a lot of different things back there, the pushback from the main road. There's also a large tree right there that's just, that's right by the mobile, and that just blocks that whole entire area. And the square footage, you know, we're at 133 over the 100. You know, there's some things that we could probably mess around with if we had to out of here. Maybe possibly eliminating the drive-through actual sign, because we can incorporate that into the EMC board, which will help bring us down on our square footage. And then, so the pole skirt, you guys said that's supposed to be a masonry?
Yeah, well, it's only supposed to be a 10-foot tall sign with a masonry base to conform with our code.
Okay. So, what, what is the, how come the mobile on that thing doesn't have that and McDonald's cross street?
Some, some of those signs predated the change to our sign, sign code.
Okay.
And actually, all those signs that don't have a masonry base predated the sign code.
Okay.
Update.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions, applicant?
Nope.
I guess I have one. You, you said you were familiar with the project.
Yep.
Are, are you familiar with our code?
Not exactly your code, no. I was just informed this week when I, you know, they asked me to come out here and represent.
Yeah, the actual applicant to the sign company, they're, they're located in Nebraska.
So, is there a way that, you know, that we can get some height out of this? I mean...
I did have one question. As far as the digital sign, is that, is that mandatory on the sign at all?
Yeah, the client would definitely like that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Especially in the location and everything else. It'd really help with our specials writing specials and everything else.
No, I understand. It's just that, that area on Orlando gets a little confusing anyway, so it could be distracting. As, as staff reported, I, I live in the area and I understand how that can get really backed up there, so that's, that's a concern for me.
We understand a certain amount of quote-unquote branding in, in the advertising of a business by signage. But the brand doesn't have to be that big and it doesn't have to be that tall. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Chairman?
Hearing, James?
Just from the community and economic development standpoint of this discussion, I would be remiss not to mention that the site itself is, is set back. It's an outlot. Being charged with selling that outlot and finding this buyer, we had incredible challenges selling that lot because of its visibility. And so, we made no promises to the, to the applicant as to what sort of signage they could get. Just please be aware of that. But please understand that it was difficult to find someone to buy this, and once we did, and, and there's a developer in place, they expressed some serious concerns about visibility being so far set back and, of course, being blocked by trees and by Kellys. So, if there is some sort of middle-of-the-road, some way to negotiate something, it would, certainly would benefit. We'd, we'd love to see this, this user be successful. That's, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thanks, James. That ends the public discussion. I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second. Second. Second by Commissioner Klinger. Discussion among the commissioners.
We're not here to negotiate, right? It's just yea or nay, right?
That would actually be my question. Are you, are, are you suggesting a different height that we should consider?
I mean, if 30 is out, then, you know, is there a height that is acceptable to the commission? That's, that's all I'm asking or suggesting.
And, and I hate to put this back on you, but what can the village live with? I mean, what can the village do? It's hard for us as a, them, sorry, I don't know, to come up with a height. What height would be a positive, what height would be okay?
I, I think I, I've probably said too much so far, so I just need you all to understand the seriousness of, of visibility for that lot. That's, that's all I'll say.
My, my personal opinion on this is that if, if you have a good product, that people are going to beat a path to your door, regardless of what size or height your sign is, they're going to find you. If, if you travel in the Chicago suburbs, just out of necessity for traffic, they put traffic out on the service roads, and sometimes it's extremely difficult to... I mean, you have to make three turns to get into a business, but if you want to go to that business, you're going to find, you're going to find a way to get there.
Yeah, and I'm thinking...
And I'm pretty sure that the owner of the property should have or did realize the difficulties with access to this property before they started constructing. Jay?
And if I were to see a 10-foot red sign behind the mobile, I, I think I would recognize it. You know what I mean? I don't think it's that invisible to me.
That tree right there is five hundred of that right now. That tree. That blocks that whole area right now.
If you're gonna talk, you need to come to the podium.
I was out there saying that, that tree's three times bigger than that now. I'm just saying, like, now that tree is over 30 feet. So, that's blocking that whole entire area. So, you don't have that visibility that you see right here. That's all.
We've, we've already explained that that sign predates the ordinance and...
No, I understand. I'm talking about the tree. That's all that tree. The tree is right there in front of that visible line.
So, go up there and point where you want your sign. I mean, just to give me a good visual where you, where you want to put it. You want to put it there?
The tree's right there on the plan. Right, it's basically right behind this tree. Where it's set on the actual plan. And on the outside of the road.
And that's gonna, there's gotta be a setback from the rolling.
Is that tree on, on your property or is it across the street?
No, it's on the median on the other side. Gotcha. I don't know if that's a village or whatever it is.
So, wait, I'm sorry, I missed it. Who owns that tree?
The, the mobile station.
Mobile station.
Have you approached them to?
I personally, no, I'm not. I'm just, you know, throwing out an idea for you. That's all.
Mm-hmm.
I also think there's a lot of visibility from Alpine. When you're looking into the parking lot from Alpine, you see Lowe's and nothing else but a big wide-open parking lot. I think with this, and we haven't discussed it yet, but with their branding on all the awnings, I think there will be a lot of visibility. And to be very honest, I've been hearing about Freddie's for a full year and how excited people are. I don't think a 30, or a 30-foot sign is going to bring you more people, nor do I think a 10-foot sign would keep people from visiting your restaurant. Just...
If you can see on the, the freestanding sign right there in, in the street view, there will be a Freddie's panel right there. Also right on Alpine.
Okay.
Which, that's a good access to it, because it's always, in my opinion, so cramped on that street by mobile turning into the
Starbucks.
Retail strip that more people will be coming probably from Alpine.
Okay.
I mean, I get why you're, why you're asking, but...
So, what about this whole closet right there? So, what, is that, that's the property right there. So, what's going on in this corner? That's facing, yeah, right there.
That's no. That's all no.
There wouldn't be any freestanding sign there, but the next item is proposing signage on all four sides of the building.
Yeah, because we're kind of getting caught up on this when there's other signage to talk about.
Yep.
I appreciate the discussion, but I kind of want to rein this in. It's not our place to solve the problem.
Right.
I just had one.
Jay, did you have something?
Well, allowing a 30-foot sign is going to open it up for the rest of them. I know there's a couple of them out there that want a bigger sign. We've been holding them back, so.
I thought the same thing.
Yeah, I just hate to...
The whole area.
And right now, the aesthetics on 173 is very nice to deviate from what we've worked so hard to get along there, I think would be a detriment to everything.
And I guess, I guess my concern is about safety as well. If the sign that you're proposing has the digital board on it, which is, which is fine, but at the same token, that is probably one of the busiest, most dangerous corridors as it is right now, because Starbucks is in the morning and there's mobile right there. People don't do a very good job of adhering to the traffic, and if you have a little bit more of a distraction between people being on the cell phone, which they shouldn't be, driving through that corridor, which there is no median, I'm really concerned about just more and more distractions in that small area. And I would venture to say also, if I know there's, if I'm locally, like I was in the suburbs and I'm looking for a local eatery, for example, like a Portillo's, I type in Portillo's, or I type in local eateries, I see a Freddie's, I hit, I hit it on Google and I go right there. So, I would second the fact that I don't necessarily need signage to tell me. I have Google to drive me there. And trust me, we like our custard, and I don't think it'll detract.
Any other discussion among the commissioners? We're, we're going to deal with this issue before we move on, right?
Sounds like she'd like to vote on a more...
All right. So, we've got a motion and a second.
Yep.
Does everyone understand and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
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 Are there any additions to the findings of fact? Hearing none. Jay, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Fluger?
No.
Klinger?
No.
Stromberg?
No.
Daniel Levich?
No.
Jay Holmes is a no. Hydeman?
No.
Commissioner Hinkins?
No. So, this is going to go forward with our recommendation for denial to the Planning and Economic Development on Monday the fourth at 5:30. The next item on the agenda is the variance from total sign area regulations.
Can I just say one thing quick? Just to clarify, since you're denying the 30-foot setup, then the recommendation is to go to what is the code, or the 10-foot setup? Is that right?
If, if this were to fail, ultimately fail to get board approval, we could only permit a conforming sign that would be 10-foot high.
And, and we are a recommending body. The board is ultimately...
I understand it, yeah. So, we could incorporate the sign the same way, just bring it down with the EMC board and the whole thing, just as is, as long as we get, incorporate with that type of thing?
That's really something to discuss with staff, not at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I'm just asking a question, that's all. So, I understand. I'm a third party here.
And you're welcome to stand there, but we're, we're moved on to the next item and we will call you.
Do you need me?
Uh, the second Freddie's variance is also concerning signage, as we said. This would be a variance for the amount of total signage at the property. Total signage is both any freestanding sign and plus any wall-mounted signs. Drive-through menu boards, directional signs, window decals are not added in to be considered with that total signage. The total signage allowed on a commercial lot is equal to either two times the lineal building frontage of the building or one time the lineal lot frontage. And frontage is where the property fronts a public roadway. In this case, based on the lot frontage being only where it faces Orlando, because that's only public road. The road on the north is a private drive. Based on that, no more than 223 square feet of total signage should be allowed on the property. This variance asks for a total of 338.8 square feet. They would like signage on each building facade, and the signage they propose really isn't all that outrageous. They'd like 43 square feet signs on the north, south, and east side, and a 76-square-foot sign on the front or west-facing side that faces Orlando, plus a proposed freestanding sign that we already discussed. Staff feels that this is a special circumstance because this restaurant is so visible from all sides. It makes sense to... It makes sense to have identification of what the restaurant is on all sides. And we do recommend approval of this variance for the total sign area with the condition that the freestanding sign not exceed 100 square feet as our zoning code requires. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right. Mr. Hekt. Would you like to speak to this item?
Mr. Hock, please.
Hock.
H-O-C-K?
Yeah.
You're still under oath, so I don't have to swear you in again.
No problem. Any questions for me regarding this?
I, I think the explanation was pretty good. Are, are there any questions of the applicant?
No.
No. No.
I don't think I have any on this item. Uh, and no one else has signed up to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Hearing none, I close the public discussion. Entertain a motion subject to one condition, that is, up to 338 square feet of total signage will be permitted at this property. However, the freestanding sign shall not be larger than 100 square feet as regulated in section Z82-2C of the zoning code.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion among the commissioners. I think it's fair and reasonable to put signs on all four sides of the building.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? Everyone agree and understand the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any additions to the findings of fact? Hearing none. Jay, would you call a roll, please? Commissioner Klinger?
Yes.
Stromberg?
Yes.
Daniel Livich?
Yes.
Jay Holmes is a yes. Hydman?
Yes.
Fluger?
Yes.
Chairman Hankins? Yes. So this one will go forward with our recommendation for approval. Um, the last item is a variance from commercial design awning standards.
Yeah, this third Freddy's variance would be a variance from the commercial design standards. The village board adopted our commercial design standards in 2016. And one of the design aspects that we prohibit in the standards is the use of internally illuminated awnings because sometimes these awnings don't look the best, especially when they're wrapped continuously around the building or they're not maintained. However, the Freddy's awnings are a common detail in many of their locations. And the spacing of the awnings separated by the brick, we believe, does look nice. It is well done and it provides light for customer safety. Um, so we are recommending approval of this variance for the illuminated awnings with the condition that the awnings be consistent with how they look in the building elevations that are in your packets dated 8/18/21. Thank you.
Mr. Hock, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Uh, I mean, your recommendation-
You gotta talk into the mic, sorry.
Well, with your recommendation, uh, you know, I, I agree upon that. Um, we've done the illuminated awnings at every location throughout the Charlotte area. It's a clean look. It's, uh, provides a lot of light and for the patio area in the front as well. So it's kind of consistent for outdoor seating. And it's a, it's a nice look.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak? I assume that there's nobody that wants to speak on this item either. Therefore, I close public discussion. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. And a second?
I'll second.
Uh, discussion among the commissioners. Hearing none, I, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to look at the elevations.
Yep, very well known.
Does everyone understand and agree with the findings of fact?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any additions to the findings of fact? Hearing none. Uh, Jay, would you call a roll, please? Commissioner Stromberg?
Yes.
Daniel Livich?
Yes.
Jay Holmes is a yes. Hydman?
Yes.
Fluger?
Yes.
Klinger?
Yes.
Chairman Hankins? Yes. So this one also will go forward, uh, planning and economic development with our recommendation for approval. Last item on the agenda. Is a special use permit for outdoor storage in light industrial district for property known as 10565 Product Drive. Carrie, would you give us the background, please?
Yep, the towing business operates from this subject property and the applicant initially asked about fencing regulations because he would like to keep towed vehicles inside of a fence until they're claimed. Because this is more of a storage use than a parking use, he really needs to seek this special use permit for outdoor storage. The, this type of use is not out of character in this older industrial area. And we would prefer that the vehicles, the, some of which have been in accidents, be stored within a site obscuring fence, which is mandatory condition for all outdoor storage special use permits. Staff recommends approval of this special use with some recommended conditions in addition to the solid fence requirement. The storage area shall be substantially conforming with the site plan that was submitted in your packets. All vehicles shall be stored on a hard surface parking area that complies with our code requirements for a hard surface. And the special use shall cease upon the applicant vacating this location. So nobody can move in there and start storing their own stuff in this fenced-in area. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Uh, the applicant is Ryan Miller. You present? Would you approach and be sworn in, please?
Don't raise your hand. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Yes.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ryan Miller, that 10830 Miller Lane, Mitchells Park, Illinois.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
We are not going to use the, well, I, I guess it's in the packet. What, if you guys can see that, we're not going to use the whole area. It's probably going to be 40 by 60. So we would go in the existing driveway and then turn coming down this way into the, into the fenced-in area. I guess maybe it's for a different time, but what the hard surface could consist of, I don't know if that's-
That's a staff issue. You can talk with them about that.
Okay. Did you say I could talk about it right now?
I, I mean, this commission doesn't vote on that. That's something-
Yeah, I really don't have anything else to add besides, it's just going to be in that, that grassy spot, basically. That's going to be cleaned off and a hard surface put down. So it'll be in that area.
Any questions of the applicant? I think I have one. Go ahead, Dan.
So you're storing vehicles there?
Yeah.
Like operable vehicles?
Some of them are operable, some of them aren't. They're accident vehicles. Like for the city of Rockford, we do accident tow's. And so we have to have a secured lot to store them until they're claimed by either the insurance company or the people themselves that own them. And right now, we're storing them inside the facility, but I would prefer to have my tow trucks inside there.
And what is your time limit before someone has to pick, before it becomes abandoned?
Um, I think it's after 60 days. We apply for a lost title is what happens. And then we would, you know, remove the car out of there. So the longest a particular vehicle would be there is probably 90 days.
Okay.
That's, that happens sometimes. Most people come and get them fairly quickly.
Right, thank you.
Could you? Uh, are there any other? Could you elaborate a little bit? One of the conditions of approval from staff is that, uh, parking shall be on a hard surface area that complies with section Z65 of the zoning code. That would be concrete or asphalt or paving bricks, I suppose. But the exhibit that we have here says, remove four inches of dirt and use four inches of crushed blacktop for parking.
That's what I would love to use. I don't know if that conforms or not, but I would put it down and then roll it, you know, with a roller and it compacts pretty hard.
And James can probably speak to that better about what our requirements are.
Oh, we, we have allowed that in the past. This is, you know, sorry to correct you, turning green, but this is the appropriate time to talk about this. I just don't know that there was a variance cited from any of the, the paving requirements i- in the notification. So technically, it has to be, at this point, has to be asphalt or, or, um, or concrete. So, um, I think in the past through this process, we've granted a variance to allow crushed gra- crushed asphalt, but I don't think that was cited. I don't know if that was in the application. That probably should have been. It was not in the application.
Well, all I, I, and the reason I made my comment, and I totally respect your correcting of me. But that's, that's not, we're, we're, we have a special use permit for outside storage. That's, that's all we're talking about. If there's a variance request for the surface area, that, I don't know how we address that today because it hasn't been noticed out.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure-
Potentially in the future.
I just want to make sure that there isn't a conflict between one of the conditions that says it shall be in accordance with this and another condition says it's got to be a hard surface and this says crushed blacktop.
The conditions on the staff report will be in the ordinance. That will control, doesn't matter what you wrote on it.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to the notes on the site plan. I was just referring to the area that he, that he showed.
Jay?
One question. How, how long have you owned the property?
Almost three years, like a little over three years, actually.
I, I don't know if I can add to the staff recommendations or not, but there's fire and safe, life safety codes that need to be followed as well. So I would somehow like to include that in there, that that get done if this gets approved, so. Or even if it's not approved, we got, we got to follow the code, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to that? Yeah, I, I, the village was unaware of the change in ownership on the property and usually a change of ownership we get, we require an occupancy, occupancy inspection, at which time those life safety issues are addressed. So, uh, seeing as it was three years ago, it was, starting November of 2017 is when the new occupancy requirements came into play. So did you acquire the building after November of 2017?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we can address that. If you wanted to add a condition that said the applicant shall, you know, secure a, an a certificate of occupancy that's standard for anybody who is new and is changing ownership or occupying a building, then we would be able to address those concerns that you have.
Okay, well, then, if, if it's, I don't know if we need to add it because it's already-
Yeah, that's a good question. Does it need to be as a condition? Or now that you know it was acquired within the last three years, you'll simply talk with the applicant and say, hey, we need to come out and do an occupancy inspection and check this, that and the other thing and-
Yes.
Check these boxes. Is that, do you appreciate?
Yeah.
What we're talking about? Okay. And you'll cooperate with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So not it, we're not adding a new condition for that?
No, I don't think it's necessary. I just, we just need to make him aware that we have these ordinances and we need to follow them.
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Dan Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, you raise your hand. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Dan Johnson, 8019 Amber Drive in Mitchells Park. I'm representing Rockford Roller Corporation, uh, which is just south of that building. Um, if you scroll out a little bit, that's our building. And we also own that lot next to it, so we're right next door to this building here. Uh, we've owned it for 30 years. My concern is that there's already a great amount of outdoor storage going on there that's not fenced in or anything. And so I have a couple of pictures here, but it currently looks like, it looks nothing like that. There's a big oil tank. There's a lot of, looks to be hazardous material just sitting around outside here. So if they're going to do a variance for outdoor storage, I would like it to cover the entire, the fencing and the hard surface to cover the entire lot line. Um, because there is, I don't know if I can bring this up to you.
Did you want to submit that as an exhibit?
Yeah, these are, these are, I'm sure it's been done. Um, most of this stuff has been owned for-
You can start him down here, please.
At least six months, so I'm sure it's permanently just added a bunch of concrete, concrete blocks. Obviously going to be some salt or something, storage. So there's already a great amount of outdoor storage that has been going on for a very long time there. We try to have a nice looking place there, as you can see. And Applied Products on the other side is a very nice looking building. So, um, I have no problem if they have a nice solid fence per code. I believe that's in your requirements would be a solid fence at least six feet high. Uh, section Z, section Z5917, I believe. And the six-foot base blacktop, obviously. Other than that, you know, that, that's, that's our main problem is that it's already out of code. So I think discussing a variance for a different section when the whole building is not in code currently is, is not appropriate.
I would, I would just ask you, sir, do you consider that a positive? That, that the area where, where this storage is going to take place-
If the fence was along the entire length, yes.
From your view?
Yes, if the, if the fence was along the entire length of the property. But, but having this and then having, just hiding the rest of this stuff from the street with this fence is not okay. Because as you can see in those pictures, our conference room looks right out onto that. So when I have customers in and stuff, that's, you know.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two other people that are signed up, but they're apparently, uh, they apparently signed on the wrong sheet. Is there anyone else that'd like to address the commission? Hearing none, I close the public discussion. And entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's sub- subject to four conditions, correct? Motion to approve subject to four conditions.
Could you read those?
You don't need to, but it would be subject to the conditions. Yes.
Oh, yeah, they're right there, those ones.
Okay, I guess we have to discuss that after.
Am I correct?
Yes, with the four, with the four recommendations.
Am I correct that we have a motion?
Yeah.
In a second?
I didn't hear a second.
We don't have a second yet.
Second.
Now we do.
In a second. Discussion among the commissioners.
I, I have a question. Carrie, is the, is the outside storage referenced by the person testified allowed?
You know, it shouldn't, I'm not sure if those are cars that were towed. I, I don't know what's going on there. But if it's a storage of materials, should not be on the property unless it's and has a special use and it's contained within a site obscuring fence.
Well, my point in asking the question is that may be an enforcement, you know, you can have your cars-
Yeah, I think, I think we'd have to investigate more and see if that constitutes the storage of materials outside.
Okay, just checking.
Because there are, you know, there are some things that are stored outside, like vehicles that aren't, you know, used for the, for the business that may not require a special use permit.
Would the certificate of occupancy address those issues?
Yeah, we'd only address life safety issues, bringing the building up to code.
So we need a clarification from the applicant as it bears on this issue?
All right, if you, it's totally your call. If you want to invite them up to clarify that issue?
Yeah.
Would you approach and, and kind of answer that question, if you would, please? What, what we're talking about is a continual storage of-
Well, we, we own the whole building, but the, the three other units are rented out to other people. So all those vehicles are not, none of them are ours. The only vehicles we have stored are inside. All those, at the very end, there's a pavement company that owns, that rents that, leases it, and he's the one that has those cars. And then there's another gentleman that has, he does, you know, some repair work, you know, here and there. And so those are his, their cars. That's all I wanted to say. They're not. And so those are his, their cars. That's all I wanted to say. They're not. They have nothing to do with the towing. I am not opposed to going the whole way across the fence at all. It just would be hard for the tenants to get in and out. I would have to try to figure out a way for that.
Okay. Did that answer everybody's questions?
Um, yeah, oh, I, I guess I'm, uh, need a clarification on where your fence is gonna start and, and is it going in an L shape to connect to the back of the building or?
It's gonna start with the face.
Oh, there it is. I see. Sorry. Uh-huh. Near the front, okay. All right, sorry.
So, um, is there, is there a height that you were gonna do, Mr. Miller?
It said eight to twelve, so.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it in your app. Okay. So, okay. I, I'd like to amend my.
Okay.
Motion, but it sounds like somebody else.
You don't allow the other guy. Somebody wants to say something.
Did you have any rebuttal?
Yeah, can I say one more thing? Um, one part we do have is that company does use great big, uh.
Could you speak to the microphone, please?
They, uh, bring in great big dump trucks and stuff a lot and, and big dump trucks and trailers on them. And when they have a problem accessing anything, rather than waiting or clearing it up, they'll just cut across the yard through our parking lot. This is gonna exacerbate that problem obviously tenfold. Um, so that's why, you know, if we did the fence all the way along the property, then that would prevent that from happening. Um, but yeah, that's, that would, if they don't fence that whole thing, that's gonna, what's gonna happen is that company is going to cut across there through our parking lot, cause that's what they do now, if there's any obstruction there at all.
Thank you.
And, and that is obviously gonna make it so they can't do that.
I think we're still on commission discussion. Jay, did you have something?
Just that I want to amend my motion. And I don't know if I do that now or not, but.
What do you, go for it.
Okay, well, I would, I would like to amend it to include fencing on the south and east there.
So you're talking about going all the way down, making an L to the back?
Add a fifth condition that requires fencing?
Yeah.
Not, not enclosing all the stuff stored, but just along the property lines.
Right, to clean it up.
I did, I just don't know if that's really pertains to the self-storage special use. If, if we can condition a, a fence requirement.
Does he have to, does it have to be an enclosure? Can he, the fence probably doesn't require a.
They're not.
Well, maybe for outdoor storage, everything needs to be, everything that's stored outdoors needs to be in a fence.
Storage, okay.
Yeah.
Not just parked, but stored, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, James, do you think it makes sense to have additional fencing as a condition?
I think we need to talk about the scope of this request. This request is for the fenced area for the outside storage for this business only. What's out there elsewhere, I, if I understand correctly, that's pre-existing non-conforming. I, I guess so, to your, your, if I understand correctly, you're suggesting taking that fence all the way along the entire perimeter of the property, correct?
Well, the south and then east to the building. I, I don't think there's much.
And I don't, I, I don't know that's what's at, at the question, that's what, at question tonight. I think the fenced area for this gentleman's business is, is what's at question tonight. I don't know that, I don't know if that'll hold up. I'd, I'd have to ask Attorney Green if that's going to hold up.
Way beyond what's been asked for, there was no publication of extending the fence. Do they need a special, do they need a special use permit simply to put up a fence?
No, they would, it was only to store things inside of that fence. If, if they wanted to fence the property, that doesn't need any kind of board approval. It just needs a fence permit. It's, it's the fact that he wanted to store the vehicles, the towed vehicles, inside a fenced area that required the special use.
Okay, so it's not, it's nothing, so my position is it's nothing that would have had, would have been required to be noticed out. Adding a condition to require fencing, uh, east to west along the south side and then north and south up to the building, probably you could add that as a condition. I think you might want to check with the applicant to see if he's willing to accept that type of, uh, condition.
Yeah, I, I can agree with that.
Mister applicant?
Mr. Miller?
Sorry, Mr. Miller, I, I.
You're still under oath.
You've heard what they're talking about and you're concerned.
I, I guess what I, I'm, I'm not opposed necessarily to taking a fence all the way along back to, there's a fence, a chain link fence, a six-foot chain link fence on the backside of the property.
So that's probably fine.
Oh, okay.
I would have to come straight on.
And it doesn't mean it has to be a twelve-foot fence like you have. It just has to, I mean, it could be offensive whatever kind is allowed. Sounds like the turning around of vehicles is kind of annoying.
I've never heard that. That's the first I've ever heard of it, for the record. But, uh, I was gonna say, there's a drainage ditch. I don't know, the water, I don't know if the water originally went, it went behind the, the building next to us, but we had to dig it all out because we kept getting flooded. And so there's a drainage ditch that goes along there and goes along the property where I'm putting the fence. So, I mean, there, I guess there will be a opening there. But for, for my fence that I filled out this for, it has to be a secured lot. That lot has to be separate from the other tenants. I mean, just to continue a fence, I mean, I'm not opposed to that. Yeah.
So, James, do you think we should add that as a condition, just to extend a fence? It's not, doesn't have to be twelve foot. Doesn't have to be just a fence that's permitted by the code.
Larger, I mean, the tenants won't be there and it'll be, you know, fenced in anyway, so.
Okay.
Would it just be?
So south side.
Just along the south side.
South side, he's got a fence on it.
Yeah, there's already a fence on the, uh, east side.
So, so that you understand what we're voting on, we, we are voting on the approval or denial of your request for a special use permit for outdoor storage with an additional condition of a fence along the south property line.
Should it be a solid fence? Otherwise, it may not be a benefit to the neighbor unless it's a solid fence.
Well, what, what's allowed by our code?
Yeah.
It, it could be a chain link. It could be solid, whatever, whatever he wants. There's no requirements to put a fence there.
I'm not opposed to a solid fence. I just wanted to point out that whole area, there's, this car is just parked everywhere and entire.
It seems to me like there's two issues. One, a fence to kind of protect that property, keep people from driving off that property, and then enforcing our code with the other two tenants, who doesn't sound like they're allowed to engage in outside storage. Again, it would have to be investigated. It would have to be, are they, I mean, I saw the pictures. It looks like a lot of junk out there. So, um, all that could be, when they, when you do the life safety inspection at the building, you could walk around and see what's there. So it would seem to me there's an opportunity to, um, let the tenants know, hey, you've gone beyond, a bit beyond what you're allowed to do.
Would that extend the special use permit for the whole area if there was a fence?
No.
Not unless you change the, this, it submitted a different site plan that had the special use encompassing all of that area.
I guess I'm a little, well, I, I mean, I guess I'm a little confused on park. I mean, they can't park there.
They could park, they could park their cars where people who work there can park their cars there. It's the accumulation of
Sure.
construction materials, trailers, you know, various stuff. Stock and trade, if you will. So I, I don't know. I just saw a couple of pictures. I, I don't know what's out there.
It just seems like the whole area over there, besides, you know, a couple, there's some nice places there. And I don't want to contribute to, to clutter and amass. That's not what I'm getting at. Just trying to get the correlation between what I applied for and all of a sudden I gotta clean up, you know. When, when across the street, it's the same thing as well, I'm asking.
We, we don't know yet till we investigate more whether you do need to clean it up.
Right, right behind.
Whether it, it does constitute a violation.
Just completely filled with cars.
And I would just ask that if you do, if this goes and, and you're gonna extend the, the fence all the way to the property line on the south side, that you would use the same material that you're using in this special use permit? So if it's solid, it needs to be solid on that whole side. Otherwise, it's just looking more of a dis-
Yeah, I agree.
Complicated mess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jay, are you okay with the amendment saying they have to be the same material?
Do I need to say that or you got that?
She'll put it in there.
Okay.
That's an amendment to your motion. Who seconded it?
Nobody, uh.
Do you agree to the, do you agree to the amendment?
Yeah.
So we'll do it as a friendly amendment as opposed to, so the motioner has proposed an amendment. The seconders agreed to it, so the record will reflect it's, it's an amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Hearing none. Uh, does everyone understand and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any additions to the findings of fact? Hearing none. Jay, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Daniel Lovitz?
Yes.
Jay Holmes is a yes. Heidemann?
Yes.
Luger?
Yes.
Klinger?
Yes.
Stromberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Hankins?
Yes. So this will go forward with our recommendation for approval, um, to the Planning and Community Development on Monday the fourth at five-thirty. Is there any other business?
I, I have a question about, cause every time they bring it, we approve it, the, the lighting of the canopies. Is it, is it necessary to have that? Cause it seems like we, we pass them all. And as, I mean, as long as they're done well. I'm not sure what the, uh.
I don't recall another variance from the canopy, illuminated canopy.
I thought.
Or state of shape. That, that, that was outweighed prior to our design standards.
The Tom and Jerry's look like it also has some kind of backlighting on their awnings as well.
Okay, I just. And I'll, I'll make a comment on that, Jay. That's a good question. But my comment is, you might have ten buildings go up that have awnings unilluminated and you never know about them because they, they're not asking for a variance. You only see the two or three or four that ask for variances. So it's not that all awnings are being illuminated. You don't, you don't understand.
Well, I, yeah, I understand, but I'm, I like, what is the, what's the conflict with the lighted? Cause it, it adds light to the people walking and the, you know what I mean? And I'm not sure what the downfall is of a lighted canopy.
I think when we, when we add that in our design standards, they can look crummy pretty fast when they, when they're not maintained and they
Okay.
fill up with bugs and cobwebs and things like that, that, that tend to happen with lighter canopies.
Okay.
Or lighted awnings, you say.
Okay. I just, I just wondered. I just said it.
That's a good question.
We'll leave it alone.
Anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
We're out of here.
All right.